Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. We'd like to welcome Joe Deacon and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. And Adam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Wiganback.
Here.
And Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Present.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In accordance with Governor Pritzker's Executive Order 2020-AS07, as amended and extended, which limits meetings to the lesser of 25 persons or 25% of the overall room capacity with the exception of individuals with proof of full vaccination plus 14 days or a negative COVID-19 test, one to three days prior to the meeting, who do not count against capacity limits, and requiring the provision of video, audio, or telephonic access to meetings, as well as the CDC recommending social distancing of at least six feet between persons. City Hall is implementing changes and restrictions for the special city council meeting, swearing and ceremony on May 4th, 2021, while complying with the Spirit of the Open Meetings Act. The council meeting will be held in person in the city council chambers. There is a room capacity restriction and all seats have been reserved. There are two rooms at the Civic Center livestreaming the event for the public temperature screening, face coverings, and proof of vaccination or recent negative COVID test. As applicable for capacity limits are required for access. Members of the public and the media are invited to watch through the livestream on the city of Peoria's website, YouTube channel, local TV Channel 22, or to listen through WCBU radio. While public comment is available in person, the option to submit comments through the city clerk's office due to room capacity restrictions was also available. Any submissions will be read into the record. The agenda, minutes, and video podcast of the meeting will be available online through the city's website. At this time, I'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We have a township item 21-111 is the official canvas results of the consolidated general election for the town held on April 6, 2021, with a request to receive and file. There is a yellow handout on your desk, and this is the signed version of the item that was in your packet.
Thank you. Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move to receive and file as outlined.
Thank you. Seconded by Trustee Jensen, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
And there is an item here for the city. 21-112 is the official canvas results of the consolidated general election for the city of Peoria held on April 6, 2021, with a request to receive and file. And there's a handout also on your desk for this item, and it is the official signed version of the item that was in your packet.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Moore, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We are at the place in the agenda that are the presentations to retiring elected officials.
Do we need a motion to approve these resolutions before we do? Okay, thank you. At this time, there's nothing traditional anymore in days of COVID, but traditionally at this time, there'd be about 300 more people in the room, and I'd go down on the council floor and we'd present the resolutions to the retiring elected officials, just for an added dimension of safety. This evening, we'll do it a little bit different. I'll read the resolutions from the mayor's desk, and then we would invite the retiring officials to make any comments if they have comments. We'll just do these in alphabetical order, and I'll start with the offices of city clerk and city treasurer first. So, this is to our city clerk, Beth Ball. Whereas Beth Ball has served the city of Peoria since August 1989, but has served as city clerk from June 26, 2012 until May 4, 2021. This year brings to an end 32 years of dedicated service by Beth Ball to the city of Peoria, during which she has given freely of her time in an unselfish effort and has demonstrated the highest ideals of public service by her dedication. And whereas Beth Ball, in her role as city clerk, has served as a link between citizens and local governing bodies and has demonstrated exceptional professionalism and unparalleled knowledge. She earned the distinction of Master Municipal Clerk, and while performing the many duties of a city clerk, thousands of people have enjoyed hearing her voice during the city council meetings over the years. While her professional accomplishments are many, her most important desire was to serve God. Now therefore be it resolved that this city council, on behalf of its members, the officials and employees of the city of Peoria, and the citizens of the community, do hereby express to Beth Ball sincere and profound appreciation and thanks for her years of dedicated service as the Peoria City Clerk. Be it further resolved that the honorable Beth Ball be presented with this resolution and this resolution be spread upon the permanent records of the city of Peoria, Illinois. And this resolution will be passed by the city council of the city of Peoria on the Fourth Day of May, 2021 A.D.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. I have been overwhelmed by all the comments, the calls, the cards, everything that I have received in the last week. I tell you, it's bittersweet, but it is such a good feeling to be able to pass this office off to Stephanie Tar, because it will be a continuation of what we started, but it will be upgraded and improved as time goes on. This is like the final chapter of a great book that you read, enjoyed, everybody lived happily ever after, and nothing bad happened to the dog.[553.79][553.79](Laughter). So, it is a great pleasure to serve, and I thank the citizens for voting for me over the years and always being such a pleasure to work with, for the most part. There's always complaints, but we always handled the complaints, too. And the most important person in my life is Fred Ball. We will celebrate 49 years of marriage at the end of this year.[591.16][591.16](Applause). And he's sitting over here in the corner to my left over here. But he's made it possible for me to serve. He's always been there for me, supported me 1,000%, and I appreciate him so much. And I just truly thank God for him. We met, I was nine, he was 11, and I was the pest for about five years, and then suddenly something happened. So, anyway, I thank him tremendously. I look forward to spending more time with my two sisters. I haven't been able to be with them too much lately because of COVID and all the other stuff, but we're in contact daily. So Nancy and Carol will be together soon. And my staff, I have been totally blessed, and I've said this before, but I can't say it enough, Stephanie Tar, Trina Bonds, Courtney Coe, and Connie Duffy, they are all, in their own right, amazing women.[677.32][677.32](Applause). I'd like to thank the council, this one especially, and the past ones. I've gotten calls from former council members today, and Leonard Eunice called me this morning and wished me well, and I appreciate that so much. But it's been fun to work with each and every one, because I feel like I have a personal relationship with all of you, the mayor especially, and the city manager, Chrissy, thank you for everything. Patrick Nicteen, we've worked together on fire pension, township, and it's been a pleasure with all of you. So, thank you so much, and I will be bidding you farewell, but not goodbye in a little bit. So, I look forward to the next chapter of my life. So, thank you so much.[738.82][738.82](Applause).
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I know I speak on behalf of the whole council and staff, your leadership in the city clerk's office. Thank you for your mentoring of Stephanie and the rest of the team, so there'll be a seamless transition as the new administration moves forward in many, many years, 32 years. And the clerk mentioned her husband Fred, who also served our city very distinguishedly as a city Peoria police officer for a quarter of a century. So between the two of you, we thank you both for all of your service to our community. And Clerk Ball, words can't express our thanks to all that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have our city treasurer, Patrick Nicteen. Whereas Patrick A. Nicteen has served as the treasurer for the city of Peoria, Illinois from May 2009 until May 4, 2021, and this year brings an end to 12 years of dedicated service by Patrick A. Nicteen to the city of Peoria, during which he has given freely of his time in an unselfish effort and has demonstrated the highest ideals of public service by his dedication. And whereas Patrick Nicteen, by his many years of efficient service as treasurer representing the residents of Peoria, has served as a member of the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, the City County Landfill Committee, the Police Pension Board of Trustees, the Fireman's Pension Board of Trustees, and elected to the Firefighters Pension Investment Fund Board, which is a statewide organization. He's also served 12 years as the township collector and has well-earned the endless gratitude of the citizens of Peoria. Now therefore be it resolved that this city council, on behalf of its members, the officials and employees of the city of Peoria, and the citizens of the community, do hereby express to Patrick A. Nicteen sincere and profound appreciation and thanks for his years of dedicated service as the Peoria City Treasurer. Be it further resolved that the honorable Patrick A. Nicteen be presented with this resolution and this resolution be spread upon the permanent records of the city of Peoria, Illinois, attested to by the city clerk. And this resolution will be passed by the city council of the city of Peoria, Illinois, on the Fourth Day of May, 2021 A.D.[912.51][912.51](Applause).
The city council, city manager, I've had an absolute delight working with all of you, and I also have to thank the members of the city council and the members of the city treasurer that came before me, because from them is the reason why we're here today. And it's been a real honor to have served all of you, to serve the citizens of Peoria. And I've also had the fortunate that I have had an excellent staff, as Beth Ball did. And I'd like to mention them as well, because it's through our staff that we're able to accomplish what we do every day.[965.31][965.31](Clerk speaking in the background.) Casey, who is one of my accountants, and then Maria Santiago, one of her clerks, and Tiffany Caldwell. And it's through the people that work here every day. Oftentimes, the people kind the scenes that the city people never see, but it's how the work actually gets done. And oftentimes, we don't pay enough gratitude to the people that work here every day and work in the offices and yet get the job done, and to them, I want to thank them personally for all their efforts and hard work. It's very much appreciated. And I'd like to also thank my wife. Because as Beth said, it's when the spouse, when you're having to take care of the daily activities and you're necessarily not home, that you appreciate that extra effort that your spouse gives you. And Beth, it's always a delight to work with you, and it has been over 24 years being here. And Mr. Mayor, you and I go back to our college days, and so it's a type of friendship that I've always said that, you know, you don't always have to agree, but you don't have to be disagreeable. And I would encourage the city council to think about that. You have a tough job to do. You make decisions every day that some folks are not going to like, but that's the job you've sought to do, and it's a job that's difficult and at times very challenging. But at the end of the day, you need to always be able to shake hands, because guess what? There's the next Tuesday, and those issues are going to be before you, and oftentimes they repeat, and as long as you continue to work together, Peoria, as I've always said, its greatest asset is its people. And if you do that, Peoria's going to be in very good hands. Anyway, thank you, God bless. I won't say goodbye, but until we all meet again, thank you.[1078.01][1078.01](Applause).
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Next, we have Councilmember Montalongo, our fourth district city council member. Whereas Jim Montalongo has served as the fourth district council member for the city of Peoria from May 7, 2013 until May 4, 2021, during which he has given freely of his time in an unselfish effort and has demonstrated the highest ideals of public service by his dedication to the city. And whereas Jim Montalongo, in recognition of his generous contribution of time and talent given on behalf of the city, that will impact the future of the city of Peoria for generations to come, is with profound appreciation and thanks for his service as a Peoria city council member. This year, as Jim Montalongo completes his eighth year as a fourth district council member, he's earned the endless gratitude of the citizens of Peoria. Be it further resolved that the honorable Jim Montalongo be presented with this resolution and this resolution be spread upon the permanent records of the city of Peoria, Illinois, attested to by the city clerk. This resolution will be passed by the city council of the city of Peoria, Illinois, on the Fourth Day of May, 2021. I'd also like to add that one of the things that really will be remembered about Councilman Montalongo's service to the community is bringing forth monthly public meetings where he met throughout his district with businesspeople, residents, and others that were concerned about issues. And following that, we saw several other examples of elected officials having those meetings. So, Councilman Montalongo, we applaud you for that as well. And at this time, we would like to thank you for your many years of service to our
Mr. Chairman, first, I would like to wish Mayor Jim Artis, City Clerk Beth Ball, City Treasurer Patrick Nicteen, the best on their next endeavors. I consider you to be community giants with the number of years of service and commitment to Peoria. I'd also like to wish my colleague Denise Moore the best on her next endeavors as well. I've always been impressed with the amount of time and passion that you have put in to city council. I'd like to say that it's truly been an honor and pleasure to serve the people of Peoria as a fourth district city council member for the last eight years, as has been an incredible experience, and enjoyed every bit of it. I've enjoyed working with my colleagues around the horseshoe, coming together two times a month here to help Peoria move forward. I really enjoyed working with the neighborhoods, the neighborhood association presidents and members. It was their passion for their neighborhoods that inspired me. I would also like to thank the residents, city staff, and guest speakers who attended my coffee and conversation meetings over the last eight years. We always got a lot of things done and had a lot of interesting and meaningful conversation that helped shape my thinking and how to do my job as a city council member. I want to wish the next council the best. I know I leave the city in very capable and good hands with the people who care and want the best for Peoria. I'm excited to focus on my business and my home life. My wife says she has an eight-years-long honey-do list for me, so I'm actually looking forward to knocking some of those projects out around the house. So, in closing, I want to wish you all the best.
Thank you. Next, we would like to recognize Denise Moore, the city of Peoria's first district city council member. Whereas Denise Moore has served as the first district council member for the city of Peoria, Illinois from May 7, 2013 until May 4, 2021, during which she has given freely of her time in an unselfish effort and has demonstrated the highest ideals of public service by her dedication to the city. And whereas Denise Moore, by her years of efficient service as first district council member, has served as a member of the Advisory Committee on Police Community Relations, the Downtown Development Corporation, Metro Peoria Committee, the Tourism Reserve Fund, the Fair Employment Commission, and the Fair Housing Commission, she has well-earned the endless gratitude of the citizens of Peoria. And whereas Denise Moore, in recognition of her generous contribution of time and talent given on behalf of the city, that will impact the future of the city of Peoria for generations to come, it is with profound appreciation and thanks for her service as a Peoria city council member. And be it further resolved that the honorable Denise Moore be presented with this resolution and this resolution be spread upon the permanent records of the city of Peoria, Illinois, attested to by the city clerk, and passed by the city council of the city of Peoria, Illinois, on
Wow. I do have prepared remarks, but before I do my prepared remarks, I cannot stress how important it is for, and I think my fellow council member, Montalongo, mentioned it, that it takes all of city staff. I couldn't do what I've done without the help of city staff, and believe it or not, good and bad, everyone around this horseshoe has taught me something, so thank you for that. And it's something that I'm going to carry with me, and that is my only advice to those who come after me. Listen to those around you. Do the research, do the work, and it'll happen. So, having said that, there are forces seen and unseen that drive us, inspire us, and uplift us. Some forces are as strong as gravity, pulling us down, and some forces, like faith, carry the boost of rockets propelling us to new heights. When I became the first African-American woman elected to the Peoria City Council, it was another history-making moment. You see, history was made in 1953, when the very first woman was elected to this council. Since that time, women on the council became a somewhat regular occurrence. However, it took another 60 years until my election in 2013, before history was made again, when a black woman would join these ranks or represent the first district. It has been my honor and a privilege for me to serve the residents of the first district. Anyone who knows anything about me and my husband know that most of our adult lives has been spent in service to our community. From starting Downstate Illinois' largest African-American gift store, the Black Business Alliance Minority Business Development Center, two radio stations, teaching, mentoring, building, and broadcasting, it has always been creating positive opportunities for people. Unfortunately, those opportunities were hard to come by in the first district. After decades of disinvestment, I can understand why some may carry a negative outlook, believing that there are sinister forces keeping an entire people down. But that's not how we overcome. That's not how we fight. That's not how we get things done. Believing that things can change, and as we used to say back in the day, actually being about it and not talking about it. Or as my mother would say, stop waiting for someone to give you something. Get off your butt and make things happen. And that's what I did. Yes, I am damn proud, excuse me, killed children, of what I was able to get done for the first district. Permit me to mention just a few of those. There's a long list, but it's just a few of those. Two resident police officers, rezoning of Greeley School for Romaine Art, Inc., new owner-occupied housing, employment training funds, business and residential growth, chief diversity officer, Western Avenue $12 Million Complete Streets Project, new South Side fire station named after the very first African-American firefighter, Fokker Street Replacement at Treewind School, MacArthur Bridge and Street Renovations, water splash pad at Harrison Homes, Martin Luther King Park playground equipment, Save-A-Lot grocery store, Dollar General, Save the Alley Lighting Fund, Channel 22 Public Access Information that the city now broadcasts daily, more alley sweeps and code enforcement than any time in the past, representing our city in Washington, DC on the National Housing Task Force, more than $100 million of real development and investment in that time. You see, if it's happening, it's happening in the first district. All of these things and more were done to uplift people. Sure, catch me after hours, and I can tell you more about our fragile democracy, and how we have to be careful not to believe a false narrative of ourselves, and how a defeated people with ineffective leadership will accept negative perceptions of themselves and work against their own interest, or how voter apathy is a byproduct of systematic racism. But that's for another time. As Adalai Stevenson said of Eleanor Roosevelt, "She would rather light a candle than curse the darkness, and so would I." I pray in my eight years I have lit the way and blazed a path for other women while trying to shine a light on issues we needed to address. Tonight, my flame continues to burn bright, and as I continue to work for economic and community development inside the Minority Business Development Center, you see, my legacy will continue, and my voice will not be silenced, and as I pass the history-making torch to my sister... And as I pass the history-making torch to my sister, the next mayor of the Peoria, Dr. Rita Ali, as the first woman and African-American to be elected mayor of the City of Peoria, I've no doubt that our city is on a path to greatness. My only regret is that I won't serve with you, but I will be behind you every step of the way. May God bless you in your path. Finally, I wanted to thank the citizens of the first district for giving me the great honor to be of service to you, city staff for helping me find my voice, and most importantly, all those in all parts of our city that constantly signal their support of my actions, my family, Kanye and Gary, and especially my husband Gary, for understanding all of the sacrifices of family and time, and oftentimes my health, to be of service to this community. The support you gave, Gary, was unwavering, and I will love you forever for that. Gary Moore. May the Lord bless us all. Now, as a final goodbye, and as a reminder, to not take ourselves so seriously, let me just say, may the fourth be with you. See you later.
Our township supervisor, Frank Abner, was due for a proclamation as well. Mr. Abner wasn't able to be here tonight, but rest assured, we will present him with his official resolution. And on behalf of the city council, in the township, and all the citizens of Peoria, we'd like to thank Mr. Abner for his years of service to our community.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We have three items tonight that we want to share with you. The first is a letter from the mayor of the village of Bartonville that we wanted to read. And Mayor Leon Ricka stated, "Mayor Artis, I write this note to congratulate you on your 16 years of service as the mayor of the City of Peoria and your many years as councilman on the city as well. What most people do not understand is the help and advice that you have given to all of us that are in the outlying smaller municipalities, villages, and in the tri-county area. I will just mention one such instance. Early in the pandemic, when charges were leveled against a large employer in our village, and you and yourself and the administrator of the Peoria County Health Department helped me to navigate through a difficult time. Jim, you have always been someone that the mayors of the tri-county area look up to. As I have stated often, as the City of Peoria goes, so does the region. As the tri-county region continues to prosper, it is largely due to the leadership that you have shown in the City of Peoria along with your city council. Your knowledge and leadership in this area will surely be missed. I wish you well in the future, and as always, wish the new mayor and council success in everything they set out to do in the future." That was Mayor Leon Ricka of Bartonville. Second is the resolution that is at your desk. Whereas Jim Artis first served on the City of Peoria as the city council member from 1995 until he was sworn in as mayor on May 3rd, 2005. After four consecutive terms, Mayor Artis will conclude his service on May 4th, 2021, almost 16 years to the day he was sworn in. Following his family's legacy of public service, he has dedicated his efforts and time to his hometown and those who live here. And whereas, his accomplishments are many. During his service, the city has been transformed through the revitalization of the warehouse district and major construction projects in the medical sector. Investments in infrastructure has improved transportation for all residents. Innovation has flourished in small companies and large. Students have been given the opportunity of higher education through Peoria Promise and summer work through the Mayor's Youth Program. Peoria brought home a title for the Best City Hall and was named an All-American City for the fourth time. Whereas, under his leadership, the city has celebrated many successes and faced incredible challenges, and all the while, Mayor Artis maintained consistent, steady leadership and kept the needs of the resident at the forefront. Now therefore, be it resolved that this city council, on behalf of its members, the officials, and employees of the City of Peoria, and the citizens of the community, do hereby express to Mayor Jim Artis sincere and profound appreciation and thanks for all of his years of dedicated service as mayor. Be it further resolved that the Honorable Jim Artis be presented with this resolution and this resolution be spread upon the permanent records of the City of Peoria, Illinois attested to by the city clerk, passed by the city council of Peoria on this fourth day of May, 2021."
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So, I sent the council a real brief note this afternoon and just said, you know, we've, all of us have been in the position of being first-time elected, newly-elected officials, and it's really a special night for those folks that have been through this, their routine a couple of times. So, I asked all of us to keep our remarks relatively brief, just because of the amount of time it's going to take to switch the council in and out, bring people in and out. So, please understand, folks, that we're just, we're trying to give deference to our soon-to-be mayor, Ali, and her new council here tonight, and trying to keep our remarks relatively brief. So, I can heartily go outside of my request, so I'm going to try to speak fairly quickly here this evening. First of all, I'd like to thank God, who has provided a lot of guidance to me, and even more so as I've gotten older, and I thank Him for His direction and His grace. I'd also like to thank my parents, who really did so much for providing such guidance to myself and my siblings in our formative years about the importance of public service. Without the example that they set, even though they had nine kids, I probably would have never had the opportunity or the desire to serve this great community. I've been honored to serve, as we all have. 22 years of serving our city, 16 as mayor, are beyond anything I could have ever hoped and dreamed of. And I thank all of our citizens for allowing me that opportunity to serve this community. I don't even know where to begin in thanking my wife of 34 years and my kids for the patience, the consideration they have given over many years, over many, not many, but a few missed birthdays and special family events. But I certainly try to make up for that by telling all of them how much I love them every chance I can. The city manager and staff, let me say that I've, unlike, you know, a lot of the members of the council have been very fortunate to serve their entire careers under the leadership of our current city manager. And it's an unbelievable opportunity to serve with one of the bests. Unbelievable talent, highest level of integrity I've ever seen, and a person who has really developed his staff in his footsteps over the years. And I thank him very much. It's been a very enjoyable 10 years. I told him this afternoon that the only thing better would have been if he would have been around when I was first elected, back in 1999. I also need to mention, there was a couple of times during, we had several transitions of city managers in my earlier years as mayor, and one individual that the community is very knowledgeable of, Henry Holling, filled in for us on two occasions as our interim city manager and also did an outstanding job, and I thank him for that. I couldn't be more excited that the opportunity is presenting Peoria with Dr. Ali and her administration. I know that, and everybody knows, that we have a lot of obstacles that we're looking at, as does every other community in this state. But I am more than confident that Dr. Ali's leadership skills, her knowledge of our community, and her desire to take this city to the next level will be achieved. And starting in probably about 15 minutes, you're all going to witness history in the City of Peoria, and that's something for us all to be excited about. So, I wish Dr. Ali and her new council nothing but the best going forward. In closing, I think Peoria's best days are ahead, folks. I think we have so much to be proud of in this community, so many things that are happening in this community. We really need to acknowledge all the things that we have going on and all of the things that are going to make, will make Peoria stand out around the state, and around the Midwest, around the country. We can get it done, and we will get it done, and that's thanks to a lot of good people that wanted to serve and elected physicians, and almost everybody in this community that wants to see us persevere and continue to be one of the greatest cities in this country. So, thanks again for the opportunity to serve and really look forward, Dr. Ali, to your tenure as mayor. Thank you. I see a light here that I really hope we don't get anything started, because we really want to keep this focused on the new council. Councilman Rigoban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that sounds really good. So, I just think we would be remiss if you didn't allow us an opportunity to express our gratitude as council members for the steady and stable leadership that you've provided to us. Except of 16 years is really hard to wrap your arms around at many levels, and you throw in a global financial crisis in 2008, 2009, a health pandemic that we're still waiting our way through. That leadership is something that we're very grateful for. The leadership that you show throughout the community with your work at St. Jude with Peoria Promise, I can't express enough how impactful that is for the families of Peoria. And I just wanted to make sure that we said thank you one more time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman. I appreciate that. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have one more item. If everyone has, if all your lights are gone, 21-113 is consideration of a motion to request approval of the resolutions commending outgoing elected officials and to direct the city clerk to spread the resolutions upon the permanent record.
A motion by Councilmember Recoree Gol and seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any comments on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Before we go to our next item, I would like to also offer the councils, especially the outgoing council, thanks to Stacy Peterson, Karen and Michelle from the mayor's office, also the IS and Public Works Department, for an unbelievable amount of work that went into this event tonight with having several locations of people watching the meeting and checking in, and you're not even halfway done yet, but we would like to thank all those folks as well. Madam Clerk?
We are adjournment.
Right. We would accept a motion to adjourn by Councilman Euler and seconded by Councilmember Jensen. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. This meeting of the outgoing city council is adjourned. Have a good evening. I also need to make a quick announcement. Gosh, Stacy would have killed me. We thank you all for attending this portion of the meeting. We now ask that our guests that are in the council chambers to exit the room so that city staff may reset the room and clean it for the second portion of this meeting. We'll return once the council chambers has been set for the guests of the incoming council.
Okay, I would like to welcome all the new guests that just arrived. I'm Beth Ball, and I, this will be the last official act as city clerk, and then my retirement begins. So, I'm anxious to call forward Stephanie Tar to be sworn in as the new city clerk. Tom, would you like to come up and join her? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Stephanie S. Tar.
I, Stephanie S. Tar.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city clerk.
Of city clerk.
Of the City of Peoria.
Of the City of Peoria.
Illinois.
Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Now, I would like to ask Dr. Rita Ali to please approach for this historic event. Do you have anybody you'd like to stand up? If you could please raise your right hand. I, Dr. Rita Ali.
I, Dr. Rita Ali.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois.
Of mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois.
Town trustee by virtue of the office.
Town trustee by virtue of the office.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
According to the best of my ability.
Yes. According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I would like to present to you your gal.
Oh, my. Okay, thank you.
Next up, I would like to ask for Stephen Morris. Okay, if you could raise your right hand, please.
I, Stephen Morris.
I, Stephen Morris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution. And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city treasurer.
Of city treasurer.
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Ex officio town collector.
Ex officio town collector.
By ordinance, according to the best of my ability.
By ordinance, according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I would like to call up Denise Jackson. If you could raise your right hand, please. I, Denise Jackson.
I, Denise Jackson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member, first district, city of Peoria, Illinois.
Of council, of council, as council member, first district, city of Peoria, Illinois.
Town trustee by virtue of the office.
Town trustee by virtue of the office.
According to best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay, I would like to ask out Charles Graeb. Okay, if you could raise your right hand, please.
I, Charles V. Graeb.
I, Charles V. Graeb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member, second district.
Of council member, second district.
City of Peoria, Illinois.
City of Peoria, Illinois.
Town trustee.
Town trustee.
By virtue of the office.
By virtue of the office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Tim Riegenbach? Okay, if you could please raise your right hands.
I, Timothy Riegenbach.
I, Timothy Riegenbach.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member, third district.
Council member, third district.
City of Peoria, Illinois.
City of Peoria, Illinois.
Town trustee.
Town trustee.
By virtue of the office.
By virtue of the office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations. I'd like to ask for Andre Allen.
I, Andre W. Allen.
I, Andre W. Allen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member, fourth district.
Of council member, fourth district.
City of Peoria, Illinois.
City of Peoria, Illinois.
Town trustee by virtue of the office.
Town trustee by virtue of the office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Okay, congratulations. Dennis Seer? Okay, if you could raise your right hand, please. I, Dennis Seer.
I, Dennis Seer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of council member, fifth district.
Of council member, fifth district.
City of Peoria, Illinois.
City of Peoria, Illinois.
Town trustee by virtue of the office.
Town trustee by virtue of the office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And then next, I would like to ask for Latrina Leary to approach. Could you raise your right hand, please?
I, Latrina Leary.
I, Latrina Leary.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of supervisor of general assistance.
Of supervisor of general assistance.
Town of the city of Peoria.
Town of the city of Peoria.
Illinois.
Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, congratulations. And then we did have one other individual, Max Schaafle. He was a township supervisor, and he does not actually get sworn in until the beginning of the year. But his election was in April, so that concludes our swearing.
At this time, I would like to convene the meeting of the Peoria City Council. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please? Mayor Ali, council member Allen.
President.
Council member Seer.
Here.
Council member Graeb.
Here.
Council member Jackson.
Here.
Council member Jensen.
Here.
Council member Kelly.
Here.
Council member Euler.
Here.
Council member Riegenbach.
Here.
Council member Recregal.
President.
We have him quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
At this time, I think we can have the invocation. Is that correct? Invitation by Minister Loris Hightower. It is such an honor and a privilege to stand before you today on this monumental occasion for the city of Peoria. I would ask that everyone please bow your heads for a word of prayer. Dear heavenly Father, the God that is full of mercy and grace, the God who is slow to anger and abounding in steadfast love and faithfulness, the God who is full of compassion, we bow before you tonight with a heart full of thanksgiving and gratefulness. We ask that you would come into our midst even now. Father, we thank you for Madam Mayor Rita Ali. We thank you for the spirit of Esther that is up on her, pronouncing her a woman full of courage under pressure, a woman in God's design, stepping out of her own immediate comfort for a greater purpose bigger than herself. We ask that you continue to raise her up, to meet her destiny as she keeps at heart the things that are priority to you. Thank you, God, that she is and will continue to retain perspective and integrity. Thank you for the opportunity, the purpose, and the privilege that she has to advance the kingdom of love, of peace, of prosperity, of healing, and of unity as she serves the city of Peoria. We pray that you lead, Madam Mayor Ali, each member of the city council and the city manager as they serve the city of Peoria. Now finally, Lord, we pray for our city. We humble ourselves before you. We ask that you pardon our iniquities and our sins. We pray for a spirit of obedience to overtake each of us as obedience yields peace, but disobedience yields oppression and death. We stand up on your promise that if we seek your face, turn from our wicked ways, you will hear from heaven, forgive our sins, and heal our land. We pray that you heal and deliver the city of Peoria from the violence, the crime, the poverty, and the racism. We pray that you may begin to abound the city of Peoria in love, in peace, in obedience, in prosperity, and in unity. We thank you, Lord. We praise you, Lord, and we ask all of these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, Minister Hightower. You've compelled me to say amen.
We are at the remarks by newly elected officials. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open the floor for our newly elected and re-elected officials to make comments. I have a few comments of my own, but I'll wait till last. So we're actually going to start with Madam Clerk, Stephanie Tar.
Well, thank you. Words fail me. This is quite a moment, and it's really hard to follow the act that we just saw earlier of Beth Ball. She was just an amazing mentor. I was very fortunate to have been working with her for the last eight and a half years, and she provided this opportunity for me. But not only with that, but there was a lot of faith involved. God put me in this position, and I couldn't be any more grateful to be here today because of that. So, and none of this would have been possible without my faith, without my family, and without my friends. And I've met many people along the way. The campaign trail, I never expected it. I never anticipated it. I never planned for it to be part of my life. But the one thing it did do is it got me out there and it got me to meet the community and the people I would represent or help during the process. So it was amazing. It was an amazing ride. It was a scary ride, for sure. But I've learned a lot, and I've grown. And I've grown to appreciate the city of Peoria very much, especially in the last eight and a half years. It truly is a beautiful community. And I also have to recognize the people that work for me. Trina Bonds, she will be my next chief deputy clerk. She is just an amazing person. She has worked for the city for the last 18 years, and she brings a lot to the office. So I'm very grateful to have her by my side. And also Courtney Coe, who is sitting here too. She will be my deputy clerk. And she has been here for the last year, and she has just filled in that position greatly. And of course, none of this would have been possible without Beth. Beth Ball, because she gathered all these people together, and we work well. I mean, it is a well-run machine, so we are very fortunate with that. So I promise you, as your city clerk, to protect the rich history of the city while preparing for and recording the future. A city cannot move forward without learning from its past, some of it good and some of it not so good. But all in all, it makes up who we are, where we have been, and where we are going. And the future is looking bright, for sure. I also promise to continue to provide for open and transparent government and to make the city's documents easily accessible to the community. And I just want to say in conclusion, thank you to Beth for believing me and providing an amazing opportunity to not only myself, but my family, and to thank the city of Peoria for believing in me and my capabilities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Tar. We're blessed to have you in this role. I'd like to recognize now our new city treasurer, Stephen Morris.
Yes.
Just right here.
Very much. Let me just say that I'm proud to be here tonight. I was born in Peoria. I'm still here. The first 25 years of my life, I thank my mom and my dad and my brother John and my brother TK for helping make me who I am. The last 25 years of my life, and John's still involved, of course. But the last 25 years of my life, my wife Joy and my son Bobby, who, without them, I really couldn't do anything, wouldn't want to do anything. I love you both, so thank you. Mayor Ali, congratulations. I look forward to serving with you, to the members of the council. I know many of you. Most all of you. Mr. Allen, I don't think I've met you yet, but I'm looking forward to working with you. I love Peoria, and that's why I did this. I'm looking forward to serving, and I thank all of the people who supported me. And I ask all of you to continue to support me moving forward for the better of Peoria. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize at this time our new township supervisor, Latrina Leary.
Hello, how's everyone doing this evening?
Hello, how's everyone doing this evening? Good. All right, so before I got here, I had a whole speech prepared. I left it at home. So while I was downstairs, I'm like, okay. You know, I think I can get it all back together. And I have some of my notes that, you know, from what I recall, from what I initially wanted to say. But I realized standing here before each and every one of you that, you know, I'm going to speak candidly and speak from my heart. You all know that, or some of you that don't know me, I'm here from Peoria. I've always lived in Peoria all my life. And Peoria is very special to me. And I just want to start by saying, I want to thank God. I think that, you know, without him, I wouldn't be here today. And without him, I wouldn't have taken that leap of faith that I did to run for office. I did not intentionally think that I would be in this position many years ago and something brought me to this. Something in me told me that, you know, you know what, Trina? This township supervisor position, this is for you. Go for it. And I did just that. And with that, I want to be, think that all of the people that voted, you know, we learned a lot, especially in this last election, how important it is. And not only how important it is, it's how every vote counts. Hence the reason why all of us are here today. I also want to thank my husband, Matthew, my daughter, Caitlin, my son, Trey. He's Matthew too, but we call him Trey. They were my backbone with all of this. This was all brand new to them as well. And so then they got a crash course into politics and local politics and things that, you know, opening their eyes to things that are going on around us that we didn't even, some of them, they didn't even know what's going on. And they were my backbone. My husband, he was phenomenal the whole way there. My team, we were small, but we were mighty. And for them, I am so thankful for. I'm also thankful for my mom and my granny. They're here with me. They're downstairs and they're watching me. So, hi, Mom. But I wanted them to be here with me, to experience this and to take this journey with me. And as I take this journey with all of you, because we all want to see Peoria go into a direction that we see evident from the last election, that Peoria is headed in a new direction. And from that direction, I believe it's headed in a good direction. And I'm so proud to be a part of that. Also, lastly, I'm going to try to keep it simple because I have a whole list here. I also want to thank each and every one of you for all of your hard work. I learned so much and I realize how much work is put into this. And then I know that with all the hard work that we've all put into this, that we are going to strive to make Peoria a better place for each and every one of us. Today is a very monumental, phenomenal, you know, thing to be a part of. And my children, my husband, my mom, my granny, they're here. But they are not only here to witness this with me or be a part of this with me, but right alongside Madam Mayor, Dr. Rita Ali. I too am the first in this position. So I get to share this moment with you, which is extremely monumental and I am ecstatic to be a part of it. I too am the first woman and the first black person of color to hold a position as Peoria Township Supervisor. And within that position, I hope to make you all proud. I hope to make the town of the city of Peoria extremely proud. And with that, I conclude, I just want to say thank you and I look forward to spending the next four years with all of you.
Thank you Supervisor Leary. At this time, we're going to recognize First District Council Member Denise Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor Rita Ali. Congratulations. First, I'd just like to thank God for this opportunity. I'd like to thank my parents, who are not here, Jimmy and Ligurtha Jackson, because if it were not for them, I would not be here today. And they taught me a lot. And it's because of them that I stand here before you today. This was not something that Denise had planned, but I have enjoyed working the past eight to 10 years as a Neighborhood Association President. I've also enjoyed working as a board member of Southside Community United for Change. I have enjoyed immensely serving residents in and throughout my community. I, as I pondered a year ago, walking around the community, asking, how can I be more effective, Lord, in helping to improve our community? It was not an easy decision. So I spent some time in prayer and I said, God, if this is my next assignment, please show me, give me the resources and the help. And boy, did the Lord ever. Not only did he send resources, he sent people from within the district, people from without, outside of the district, people outside of the state. So I am deeply humbled and grateful for this opportunity to serve you all and I don't take it lightly. I feel privileged to be working with a wonderful staff of people here at City Hall, the city manager. And many of you I have known just from my involvement in working as a reporter, but I never thought I would see myself on this side of the horseshoe. And I'm deeply honored and it gives me a totally brand-new perspective. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you because I love, if I can steal the role, the saying from the movie Glory. I love the First District. I did not realize how much I love the city of Peoria. And I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you and Mayor Ali and council members. If there's anything I can do to make your jobs easier and to assist you, I'm here. Thank you.
Welcome. We're happy to have you. Our most veteran member of the council is Councilman Grab. And I'll be leaning on you, Councilman. You know where all the bones are buried. And I'm saying that facetiously, but I will lean on your expertise and your years of knowledge and service on the council. He's been re-elected again and I look forward to working with you.
Mayor Ali, it's indeed a high pleasure to serve the people of Peoria with you and the other members of the council and town trustees and to once again have the privilege to serve the people of Peoria and the people of the Second District. It doesn't matter whether it's the first time or the sixth time, it still is a humbling experience and we serve at the pleasure of the people. And we have a lot to do in the months and years ahead, but we have a tremendous amount of opportunity. With challenge and crisis comes great opportunity and I believe will rise the occasion. I also absolutely believe, even though all of you know I can talk about some of the problems which bedevil our community, I absolutely believe that the best days for Peoria economically and spiritually are ahead. But we must unify, as you said, Mayor Ali, and work for the greater good and for our entire city. There isn't a week that passes that I don't hear something from someone who moves into our city, perhaps a professional, maybe not, someone who is a member of the professional class, but someone who is here and they say, you've got a great community. You have a tremendous community. We love it. We're from, I could name the state, could be an East Coast state, could be a West Coast state, could be any one of a number of big cities. We think Peoria is fantastic. There is a very, very reasonable cost of living here. We can live in a home that far exceeds anything we could have in San Francisco or Los Angeles. And I could go right down the line of the cities that they're discussing. Medical professionals who come here from Chicago, they say they can be anywhere in Peoria in 10 or 15 minutes. And they believe, just as I do and I know as you do, Mayor and council members, that any problems we have will be resolved and solved by what is best in all of us. And we will get the job done. Thank you, Mayor Ali, and thank you, council members. And I thank the three people who have helped me through so many years get to where I am and who inspire me, Marcella, Scott and Hetty. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Encouraging words. I'd like to recognize our Third District re-elected council member Timothy Rigenbach.
Madam Mayor, wow, does that have a nice ring to it. Congratulations to you, first of all. And I would like to begin by thanking the voters, the residents of the Third District for choosing me to be their council member for another four years. As Councilman Grab said, no matter how many times you've been through this, it's a humbling experience and one that truly we take to heart. So thank you. I would also be remiss if I didn't recognize my wife Barbara for her perseverance through the years and for what she has done keeping our family, our household on track as I am out serving as the councilman. Our two sons, Moses and Sam, are here tonight. They won the lottery at the Rigenbach household for the three seats. So I'm happy that they're here and our three daughters, Irene and Ryan Amanda, are watching this virtually tonight. Personally, I would say that I feel very refreshed and reinvigorated as we get to the task at hand here. Looking forward to working with the new mayor, Mayor Ali, with the colleagues, new colleagues around the horseshoe. And I think it's clear that we really do have that desire to make Peoria a better place collectively. There was a song that was popular a number of years ago in the churches that said something to the effect that greater things are yet to come, greater things are still to be done in this city. And you know what? As a man of faith, as a council member, as a Peorian, I think that sums up my prayer and my desire for our city for these next four years and the years to come. The greater things are still to come. So I would just close with that. And again, thank you for being here tonight with us and thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Councilman. I'd like to recognize our newly-elected Fourth District Council Member Andre Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That sounds amazing, just saying. So thank you, congratulations. Thank you for being a trailblazer. Wow, this is so surreal. This moment right now is probably up there with getting married and the birth of my children. I'm not going to rank them because I don't want to disrupt my household, but it's definitely in the top three of moments for me. I want to first off by thanking God for putting me in this position. I'm truly blessed to be in this position, to represent the amazing constituents of District Four and representing the city of Peoria. I want to thank the constituents of District Four for illustrating their support in me and voting for me. I do not take for granted the currency of a vote. That is the most powerful message that you can send is voting. And so I definitely do not take that for granted. Thank you all. And I look forward to representing you. I look forward to listening and my best ability will be my availability to the constituents of District Four. I want to thank my parents, Andre and Sharon Allen. Without them, wow, I mean, they raised me and my two younger brothers, Sean and Irvin, who are watching virtually right now. And they just, I mean, I'm about to be 32, so my mom and dad have been married 33 years. And they have just ultimately just been just great role models for us and sacrificed so much for their son to be elected to the Peoria City Council. So thank you so much, Mom and Dad. I want to thank my brothers, Sean and Irvin, who are watching virtually downstairs. Being your big brother, I'm the oldest of three, so that was my first leadership role, being the big brother of the Allen brothers. And I know sometimes I had to be hard on you all. You know, that's the big brother's role, but you all always gave me confidence and you let me lead you even when it was probably tough, I'm sure. So thank you so much for allowing me to be your big brother and you guys are now inspiring me, you know. And so I'm really just so fortunate for them. I want to thank my children. Barbie Marie, who's downstairs, she's six and her being able to witness this. And, you know, I hope that, you know, I'm making her proud as her father. I want to thank my only son, Drayton, who is at his aunt's house right now, probably watching this or might be watching Blippi, who knows. And then my youngest, Dream, who is 10 months. Last but not least, I want to thank my rock, my foundation and the love of my life, my wife, Jelisha Allen. I would never think that we would have accomplished so much than we have in our time together. Marrying you was one of the best decisions I ever made in my life. You are the mother of my three children. You cheer me up on down days. You criticize me when I need to hear it because sometimes I get a little bit heady and you definitely humble me. You are the council member of our family and I appreciate that in everything you do. And I promise I will continue to make you proud and thank you for allowing me to live this life by your side. I really do. To the citizens of Peoria, I ultimately do believe that our best days are ahead of us. I truly do. I am a Peorian through and through. I am Peoria proud. I genuinely am just so grateful to be in this position to serve with you all around this horseshoe, to work with our city staff. We have amazing city staff. I look forward to using my two ears to listen, my two eyes to read and research. And then after that, I'll do a little talking. But I'm going to go in here as a sponge, learn a lot and to represent the constituents of District Four and ultimately the city of Peoria. So thank you so much. I will do not take this for granted and it's time to get to work.
We welcome you, Councilman Allen. And last but not least, we have a history together. Fifth District, re-elected council member Dennis Seer.
Madam Mayor, congratulations on your accomplishment and I'm looking forward to working with you the next four years. Just a side note for Councilman Allen, it took me two years to train Dr. Ali so she could be up front. So four years from now, if you're listening to me, you could be our next mayor too. So I just want to add a side note. I won't take credit, congratulations on your journey and I'm really looking forward to working with you. It takes a city to raise a councilman. And in my case, I got so many people to say thank you to for my first term. Number one, some of my colleagues are now gone. They're not here anymore. I want to thank former mayor, Mr. Artis, for working with me and training me and being patient with me in the last four years. And council members that are no longer here, Mr. Jim Malongo, I work with him real closely since he is the closest district to the fifth. Number four, I'm looking forward to working with Andre. And Councilman Denise Moore, she, as I said, all these people have helped me tremendously my first term because my learning curve was very, very steep. So I want to say thank you to city manager, Mr. Urick, you and your whole staff, the department heads and all the staff, really. They've been working with me and helping me out and it's been really, I can't believe the first four years is gone already. So thank you to everybody. I want to thank my opponent, Ryan Height, who ran a great campaign, nice and clean. And I'm sure he'll be very successful in all his future endeavors. Congratulate all the people who ran a campaign here, started with Andre, Congressman Allen here and Denise Jackson and Tim Rigenbach and Chuck Graham. Congratulations for winning your race. Also looking forward to working with you guys the next four years. I need to obviously thank my best friend, my wife, Jeannie. We've been married for 33 years and there's no way I would be sitting this chair without her and her vision. And being from Canada, you're not raised the same way as an American. The sky is the limit and chasing your dreams. And my wife of 33 years, little girl from Metamora. It's been just an incredible journey and for her to be behind me, especially during the campaign, it was incredible. It was really a family affair this year for me with this campaign with my wife, Jeannie. My youngest daughter, Bella, is here tonight. She is the best driver of our family. Knocking on doors, she was the driver. of our family knocking on doors. She was the driver and get us from one door to another, and she did an outstanding job. And my oldest daughter is in college, but she came back a couple of times to help me out and knock on doors. And that was just a great family time, really, to knock it on doors and run a campaign as a family. And, no, like all my colleagues there, we're public servant, and I want to thank all my friends and neighbors in the fifth district for voting for me. I'm looking forward to serve you for another four terms and really do the best that I can for this second term. So, thank you very much. And Dr. Ali, Mayor Ali, congratulations again, and let's move on.
Thank you. Let's do that, councilman. I have a few comments, and I'm not going to take a long time. But I also want to give thanks and appreciation to God because my daily prayer for the last maybe seven years has been, "God, make me an instrument of your peace and of your love." I never imagined it would have brought me here, but I'm just extremely honored to be in this role and to serve Peoria and Peorians in this way. You know, I have to thank my predecessor, Mayor Artis. That was the classiest transition I've ever seen. And we've seen some transitions on a national and local scale that were not so nice. But we met a week ago in his office, now my office, and we just talked openly and honestly, and he was very sincere in offering me his assistance in any way without, you know, telling other people, but just telling me that I could call on him if I chose to with any questions. One thing, and we talked about things that I won't share, but I will share this. He said, similar to what he said tonight, he said, "You're my mayor, and I want you to be successful." And I think that that's very classy of him. Don't you think? Don't you agree? So, I thank him for 16 years of service as mayor and 22 years of service on our council. I thank the public for electing me to this position. I run a hard campaign because I want to be successful in all things that I do. So, I work hard, but I have a lot of people that work hard with me and for me because they have confidence in my ability. And I'm just so pleased to hear the confidence that Mayor Artis expressed today and the confidence that I've heard around the horseshoe today. And I have confidence that we will be united, that we will work as a team, that we will work our relationships to move Peoria forward. I believe that sincerely with all my heart. And I just, I plan to govern harder than I campaign because it's just that important. I plan to retire early from my vice president position at Illinois Central College. I've held that job for 17 years as vice president of Workforce and Diversity. And on June 30th, that will be my last day in that role, and it will allow me time to work as a full-time mayor for Peoria, not as a city manager, not to step on Mr. Manager's toes, but to work in the capacity of a mayor and to work alongside with you in helping to solve Peoria's problems. And we know we have a lot of problems to solve, right? But we also know that these problems are also opportunities, and I believe that we will turn them into opportunities. There was a common theme that I heard today that Peoria is going to be better moving forward. That outlook is very positive, and I believe that. I think that I would be remiss if I did not mention the historic meaning of today. Yes, with our township supervisor, Supervisor Larry, but also in electing the first woman after 185 years as Peoria's mayor, after electing after 54 mayors, the first person of color, the first African-American. It is historic. And, you know, I've been in the business of diversity for a long time, for 22 years. I teach about prejudice. I teach about understanding prejudice, and one of the root causes of prejudice is status inequality, right? Status inequality. But I'll tell you, electing me to this role helps to address that inequality, that status inequality. By putting a woman and a person of color in a leadership role, it begins to break down those perceptions, begins to tap into those stereotypes, and it begins to actually make people have more comfort and confidence in women and people of color in leadership. So, I do want to raise that status, and I do believe that my being in this role helps to do that. So, I'm grateful for that. I have to recognize the people who have made me who I am because I am a made person, made by my mentors, made by my family, and first, my mother. My mother, Nora Bryant, is here. She was my first teacher. She's been my longtime role model. Mom, raise your hand. I thank you, Mom, for everything that you've done for me, everything that you've given me, and how you always support me. I've always called on you when I needed you, and you've always been there. I know Dad didn't make it to see this day, but I know he would be very, very happy today. My sister, Robin, is also with me. She's my only sister, blood sister. I've got other sisters, but she's my blood sister, and she's my rock. And I thank you, Robin, for sissy, for always being there. And also in chambers with me is my daughter, my only birth daughter. I have many daughters, believe me. She's my only birth daughter, Brandy. She was also my campaign manager, and she's also a member of the Peoria County Board. We're very proud of that. So, to my family who's also not here, they're at another location waiting for us to get there, I just want to say I love you. I love you all, and I thank you for your support and for your love. And last, to my fellow council members, I look forward to working very closely with you, to getting to know everyone better. I have goals, and I want your help in achieving those goals for Peoria. And you have goals, and I want to help you in achieving your goals. So, I think, you know, we have to be unified. We have to remove the barriers. We have to communicate better, more transparently, and I believe that we can do that. I believe it. So, I thank the staff. I just, I'm very excited about today. So, I want to end by saying, "God bless Peoria. God bless Peoria." Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Okay, we are at the regular agenda. We have some town items. Number 21-114 is a communication from the township supervisor requesting authorization for the town board to adopt a new resolution reaffirming that elected official positions meet the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund hourly standard of 1,000 hours per year.
And I don't think we can vote using the voting system.
No, no. You will have to raise your hands because we do not have the voting system set up for the new council as of yet.
Okay. And are these, we're taking these one at a time, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, the first item?
It was the 21-114.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the first item, Councilwoman Jensen? Is there a second? Councilman Sears. Okay, any questions, comments? Yes.
I would like to make a substitute motion for a one-week deferral on this till our May 11th meeting.
Motion to defer seconded by Councilman Ruck Regal. Any comments, questions? Do you want to have further explanation?
Deserves a little further discussion of the new council. So, rather than go into that tonight, let's do that next week if that's the will of the council.
Okay. All right. So, we're going to move, we're going to vote on the deferral. Okay? All in favor signify by raising your hand. Okay? Those opposed signify by raising your hand. Okay, so we have Councilmember Jensen and Councilmember Grab voting no, and everyone else voting yes. So, it passes. Okay, so we'll defer that item. Madam Clerk?
Item number 21-115 is a communication from the township clerk requesting approval of designating township supervisor, Latrina Leary, as a township IMRF authorized agent.
Move to approve. Okay, second. Councilmember Riegenbach is second. Any questions, comments? All in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed signify by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, 21-116 is a communication from the township officials with a request to approve a resolution authorizing named bank to act as depositories of the town of the city of Peoria and authorizing the town of the city of Peoria to accept and release securities for safekeeping held by a third party and authorizing named bank to honor checks, drafts, etc., and repeal the resolution adopted on May 2, 2017.
Motion to approve, Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any questions, comments? All in favor signify by raising your hand. Any opposed signify by raising your hand. That passes unanimously.
Okay, we are at some city items. 21-117, communication from the mayor and corporation council with request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
Move to approve, Councilman Kelly, seconded by Councilman Riegenbach. Okay, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Any opposed signify by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously.
21-118 is a communication with a request to approve public official bonds for the mayor, the city clerk, and the city treasurer and the city comptroller from Calendar and Company.
Councilman Grab?
This is a ministerial move tonight, and it's something that we do each time by Illinois compiled statutes in accord with them. And I'd move for approval.
Second, Councilman Kelly seconds. All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Any opposed, raise your hand. That passes unanimously.
21-119 is a communication with request to adopt a resolution authorizing named banks to honor checks, drafts, etc., of the city of Peoria, authorizing the city treasurer, city manager, and the finance director, comptroller to accept and release securities for safekeeping held by a third party and repealing resolution number 11-466.
Councilman Riegenbach move to approve. Okay, seconded by Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Ruck Regal move to approve. Councilman Riegenbach seconded. Those are's. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously.
21-120 is a communication with request to authorize the city council to adopt a new resolution that elected official positions meet the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund hourly standard of 1,000 hours per year.
Councilman Riegenbach?
Move to defer this to next week's meeting also till May 11th for the same reasons.
Seconded by Councilman Kelly. Any questions, comments? All in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Any opposed signify by raising your hand. Councilmember Jensen opposed. Oh, and Councilmember Grab also.
We are at the citizens' opportunity to address the city council, and I do not believe we have any cards. So, we are at the benediction with Pastor Heather and Chris Taves.
What an incredible evening, right? Congratulations. Let's pray. Holy Spirit, we are so grateful that you are here with us in this room tonight. Heavenly Father, thank you for the city that we live in. Thank you for this great city of Peoria. Tonight, we want to honor those who've gone before us, those who now are allowing us to stand on their shoulders. And as so many have said tonight, and as I heard you say today, as we were preparing to come here, the best is still to come for Peoria, Illinois. I want to honor, Heavenly Father, the people that sit in this room and their commitment and their desire to make Peoria the best place it can possibly be. Thank you for their service, for their sacrifice. Thank you for their families, their willingness to take on a role that can be complicated and a role that can cause a lot of people to question them. I pray, Lord Jesus, that you would continue to give them wisdom, that you would guide them, that they would feel your presence with them as they lead this city. We know that Peoria has many things to offer, and right now, Jesus, I pray that we would see an increase in businesses. I pray, Lord, that we would see innovation just flood this city, that we would have new ideas, fresh ideas, and that this would be a place where people would come because they know there is opportunity here. So, we thank you, Heavenly Father, and we know that our best days in Peoria, Illinois are still to come.
Yes, Father. We bow before you tonight. We're so grateful for the greatest currency that the city has, its people. We thank you that this city, while hidden by some, is rejoiced by others. We've heard it tonight. People that are here, that are serving you, that love this city so much. love this city so much. We thank you for the faithfulness of the people that have gone before, the service that we've heard about in this room tonight. Father, would you bless those people, those years, those things that were done when no one was looking. They will serve this city so well. Maybe we honor those people. We now stand on their shoulders, Father. We thank you for this heart of, this heartbeat that is heard tonight, for a love for a city, such a great city, the best city in the world, a city that we've dedicated our lives to, Father. God, would you just continue stirring in our hearts, stirring in people that look different, but people that are all the same, people that all look like you. Thank you, Father, for each and every one here tonight that's serving you. Father, we pray for wisdom for this new council, this new mayor. Father, we pray the prayer that Daniel prayed. He said, "Praise the name of God forever and ever, for he has all wisdom and power. He controls the course of world events. He removes kings and sets up other kings. He gives wisdom to the wise and knowledge to the scholars. He reveals the deep and mysterious things and knows what lies hidden in the darkness, though he is surrounded by light." We thank you and praise you, God, of our ancestors, for you have given us wisdom and strength. You have told us what we've asked of you and revealed to us what the king has demanded. So, Father, would you bless this city? Would you keep this city? Would you cause your face to shine upon this city? Would you turn your face towards us? And God, oh, be so gracious to us. Pour out your grace upon us and give us your peace, your shalom, the presence of the goodness of God. We pray this in Jesus' powerful name. Amen.
Thank you, pastors Chris and Heather. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
We are at adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Allen. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. We are adjourned, and I'm going to ask our council to please stay seated. We're going to get a council picture, and then we can fully adjourn.